I hope that you've had a chance to get your coffee. We want you to be awake. We want you to have that caffeine flowing through you for the next two hours of candidate foreign debate excitement. This is the third and last scheduled candidate forum, and we're happy and we're K H N B to be able to be hosting this event this evening. We're going to say some thank yous as we start out, and of course, we have to say in my personal sense, say thank you to Annie and her staff for providing the room and sending We also want to thank New Leaf for providing the coffee. And I wanted some cookies for you all, and they sent over something that wouldn't, you know, well, for a larger crowd, but for a smaller crowd, you can all have a little taste. So, we thanked them for that. Some housekeeping items. Number one, of course, would be your cellphone. People say it all the time, and yep, what do we hear?
Dingling, dingling.
So, if you would be so kind as to turn off or to silence your cellphone, and I myself have been guilty of violating that sometimes in the past, then it's embarrassing, and I don't want you to be embarrassed. We're looking out for you. We're looking out for you here. Okay. So, this two-hour session is going to be recorded and made available on demand for listening at KHNRadio.com. And our local newspaper, The Review, has asked for a copy of the recording since the reporter was unable to join us this evening. So, what am I saying? I'm saying that everything that is said this evening is going to be in concrete. So, it's going to be available for not only the press to digest, but also for people to go, that didn't get a chance to be here, and actually listen to the entirety of our this evening's program. So, my request to the candidates, and I'm sure this goes without saying, why do people say that and then do I have to say something? Is that, you know, I know that you all have differences of opinion. You're very passionate about those opinions that you have, but I would ask you to be civil, unlike the people in DC that haven't learned how to do that yet. But we're going to take the high road, and we're going to be civil, and in other words, play nice. Play nice this evening, if you would. Now, also, the last thing I wish to remind you of is that you are going to be allocated a certain amount of time to answer questions. So, please, keep your eyes on our two lovely timers, Jam and Joyce, who have joined this evening. And when you see the sign of 30 seconds, it's time to wrap it up. And when you see the stop sign, what does stop mean?
Stop.
Keep going.
No, that's caution. That's yellow. That's when you speed up for that. But when you see the stop, please do so, because the last thing I want to do is embarrass you by interrupting you. But we have to have rules. We have to keep this orderly. So, I'm going to go ahead and ask you to do that, if you would. So, with that having been said, we're going to start out with something extremely easy for you. And for those of you that in our audience and people that will be viewing this or listening to this program later on, perhaps they really don't know who you are. And so, I want each of you, within a minute's time, to just give us a little bio of yourself. You know, where were you born? Where did you grow up? Were you married? How long you been here? Whatever would be of getting to know you type of icebreaker situation. So, one minute each, just for a general introduction. Nothing more than just who are you and a little bit of background on you. So, we're going to start with the lovely lady at the end, Deborah Penrose, and we will continue to come my way. One minute, please.
Hi, Deborah Penrose. I'm a physician, but I started out on the east coast. I went to art school and got a bachelor of fine arts, practiced fashion illustration, and did that in Manhattan for a year. I then got married, had two kids, got really bored, and went back and started to take some pre-med, well, turned out to be pre-med classes. I thought it was just science. But everybody in my class was a pre-med student. The University of Penn had this great program where you could do that. So, I did that for a while. Then I was a volunteer. And then I ended up going to medical school and actually graduated and became a physician and practiced here in Half Moon Bay for 20 years, 20-some years, and have loved it. I moved here in 1990, and I think I'll be here for the rest of my life.
Robert Brownstone. And I grew up in the Bronx, New York City. Unfortunately, the Yankees are out of it, but I'm still doing crap. I started out back east in terms of my education. I went to Cornell. I got a degree in labor relations. I also have a law degree with a focus on employment law. And I spent the last 25 to 30 years focusing on helping organizations be more effective, where I've applied a lot of those skills. Some of you might know there's organizational development, organizational effectiveness. So, what that means is, when there are complex issues with a lot of competing objectives, it's always been my job to help facilitate win-win solutions. I've been out here for 30 years in California, and I'm lucky enough to have a coastal family here that spans three generations, between myself and Suzanne, my partner here. And aging and ranging ages from 15 to 85, and includes 13 family members.
My name is Debbie Ruttig, and I grew up in upstate New York. And I attended the University of Rochester, where I obtained a degree in history. I have a master's degree from the University of Missouri Columbia in journalism, economics journalism specifically. I've worked as a newspaper, daily newspaper reporter, covering local government and business. When I moved to California to get married, I worked for HP for three years and several other Silicon Valley companies and public relations firms. I moved to Half Moon Bay, actually, the second time in 1989, but previously to that, I'd gotten married at the Box Society, the Douglas Beach House. Had a great wedding, 40 people, lots of music, 12 hours. It was fabulous. So, I've raised my two sons in local public schools. I bought my first home here and my second home here. Very lucky to have done that. And I've been involved in the public sector for 25 years.
Evening, everybody. Thank you for coming, and thank you to the radio station for having us. My name is John Zallow, and I've lived in Half Moon Bay for 53 years. I was born in Phoenix, Arizona. We moved here, well, we actually moved to South San Francisco in 1963, and then in 1964, my parents moved to Half Moon Bay because they could afford to buy a brand-new house here. It was the first time I had my own bedroom. I had two sisters in a two-bedroom house in Phoenix, and I had my own bedroom in Half Moon Bay. And after I went to Half Moon Bay High School, got out of high school, went to Coast Guard, got out of the Coast Guard, got a job at the phone company, made $2.25 an hour, enjoyed having all that money, so I never went back to school. That's all the schooling I ever had, except for through the phone company, and now I work for Sewer 30 Midcoast site. And the money guys could go out and clean your sewer when you called Sam. I don't know if anybody here ever has, but if you have, we're the ones that come out and clean your sewer for you. And that's it. Now, I just want, I felt like it's time for me to do something, so just griping at the city council, I should try to help them and gripe from inside.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you for hosting us. I'm Virginia Turison, and I too was born and raised in Manhattan. I spent 30 years in New York, and I took care of both of my parents before they died of cancer. And I was working at Morgan Stanley at the time. And after my parents passed away in 1988, I moved out to the west coast. I originally lived in San Francisco, continued with Morgan Stanley. I was with them for 12 years, part of Morgan Stanley, I was with Ernst &amp; Young, became a CPA. And within Morgan Stanley, I had a great mentor, and I moved into the venture capital industry. So, it was very natural to be out here in Silicon Valley. Started my own venture funds with two other partners, raised over $400 million, did one short stint back in New York, turning around a venture fund. And I've been out here ever since. I lived on the coast in Pacifica for five years. I've also lived here for six-plus years, and this is my permanent home, hopefully. And I also help small businesses sell their business through M&amp;A transactions.
I have my own microphone, thank you. Well, I want you to know that I was born in San Francisco, okay? We have to have some local representation here. I've also been asked by our sound engineer if you would please hold the microphone just a little bit closer. Now, I'm not saying you have to be like the people that are on some of these shows on TV, the singers that swallow the microphone, but try to make it a little bit closer, because it's easier to record if you do that apparently. So, we thank you for doing that. I found that interesting myself, so thank you for giving us a little bit of information about you. Now, this next question will require a one-minute answer. And again, it may be a little bit, you know, pressing to stay focused and everything, but you've had two chances in this already candidate's meeting, so you're all pros at this now. My question to you, one-minute answer, and we'll start here and go down the other side, is how important is it that a person have experience in running for the city council? For example, let me use myself just as an example here. I lived here in 1981. I've never been on the city council. I've never been on the planning commission. I've never been a part of any government committee in any way, shape, or form. Does that disqualify me for running for city council, other than the fact that my wife said that she would divorce me if I did? So, how important is it for a person to be experienced?
Well, I hope people are looking for different perspectives. I have not been in city government before. I have raised money from public institutions like CalPERS. My view is, I think the city council should have a diverse set of experience bases from different individuals, so that we can all collaborate and bring different things to bear. My experience base is financial. It's collaborating with constituencies both inside and outside of the organization to put together and structure deals and make things happen. I've built teams, bi-coastal teams. I have put a lot of money to work in terms of investment vehicles and been very successful. I know how to raise grant money, and I've got a different set of experiences that I hope will be helpful in terms of various projects and ongoing endeavors. I've also, early in my career, was involved in condominium conversions and some real estate opportunities, which I think is also helpful and beneficial.
Yeah, I see no problem with running for office. I figure that's our democratic right and duty to run for office. If we had to stop and have to be qualified for doing it, you know, we wouldn't be getting a lot of people, you know, out, whether he blink and he split rails, what the heck? He got to be president. Yeah, I have no formal education of any sort, while I was the half-of-the-high-school student body president. That was one thing I did, that was back in 1969. But yeah, I see no reason that everyone should run. Everyone should give it a shot at one time or another. I mean, that's, it's horrible, tell the truth. Running for office is horrible. It's not a lot of fun. I walk, how many miles I walked the last two days up and down the streets over in Arleada Park, the Al Seis Lorraine area, hanging door hangers. I mess around doing it all the time and saying the same thing to every, "Hi there, my name's John Zallow. We're running for city council." Yeah, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work doing it, but I'm enjoying it. I really am. And I'll enjoy being on the city council even more. Thank you.
So, I believe that if you can vote, you can serve. And I was elected to Half Moon Bay City Council two and a half years after moving to Half Moon Bay, back in the early 90s, when I first served. The difference is, I didn't completely come out of the woodwork. I had written the city's growth control ordinance that passed by the voters by approximately 70%, and I previously had written an advisory measure and helped another council member become elected. So, I actually, you know, within the three days of moving here, I dove in, joined a citizens group, and ran for city council. So, I guess what I'm saying is, I believe that diverse set of experiences is good. What I bring is institutional memory. So, you don't want a city council of all newcomers. You do want diverse experiences. I would probably be the only person that actually has a very strong set of institutional memory and understood what happened before, understand how government works, and understands the local players.
I've had a broad range of experiences both public service and private. I've worked in three federal agencies, worked in the Internal Revenue Service, where you learn to definitely learn how to take care of other people's money. Cannot mess around with people's money like that. I worked for the Department of Labor, where I learned how to make sure employees, who knows that worked, that their rights were protected, equal pay, et cetera. And my favorite agency was probably the Environmental Protection Agency, because it most aligned with my own values of always keeping the air and water clean in crisis. But I think there's also personal characteristics that we look for in terms of serving on a city council, which is be willing to listen to the customer, to constituents, going out there, finding out what they're interested, what they're concerned about, and be willing to be influenced by what you hear from people, not having, you know, my way or the highway type attitude, and be able, be able to work with your fellow city council members so that things get done and you don't get stuck in argument and chaos and inertia.
Yeah, I have to agree with everybody, everything that's been said. I think diversity on the council is wonderful. I think it helps to hear different people's points of view. I certainly, when I ran the first time four years ago, knew nothing about politics, and it's been a steep learning curve, but, and I wish, I wish I had known back then what I know now, because I had no idea how much work it was going to be. But I love it. I love it. It is a platform for me to hear from other people what they care about and to try to do some good for our city. And I think that the willingness to listen, the willingness to respond after you've listened and actually follow through are critical, critical characteristics. It's not just listening, it's also responding. So, I think I've shown that in the last four years, and I want to keep doing that. I want to keep working on the things that we've started.
Thank you for that. That was perfect. Boy, you stopped running the money there. Okay, now, this next question is going to be a lightning round. And when I say lightning, I mean lightning. You're each going to have 30 seconds, no more. Actually, it could be answered in probably three or four seconds, but we'll give you 30. And if you violate the 30-second rule, this time, we're going to ring the bell. Ring the bell. That's right. Everybody can hear the bell, right? Okay. Again, you've had two previous council forums. You've received a lot of questions from moderators, from the people that were present at those meetings, and I know that each of you has many things that you would like to accomplish if you were elected or re-elected to the city council. But I'm going to ask you for the one priority in your mind, and you can only tell us one. Tell us the top priority, the most important goal you wish to be accomplished if elected. In other words, what is the top goal that you would like to see accomplished during your tenure of being on the city council? 30 seconds. We'll start here and go back the other way.
You can start it up there?
Oh, you have. Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
All right. It's not fair. I have more than one priority.
Top priority.
I don't have a top priority. I've got several. But I'll talk about one of them. Open, transparent, collaborative government. Place, a place city hall is a place where everybody comes, everybody's heard, everybody plays a part.
Mine would be affordable workforce housing. People work here, our police, our teachers, civil servants, people work in city hall, farm workers, and our emergency workers. People can't afford to live here. What could be more concerning than having emergency workers living across the hill when it's time for an emergency over the hill? So, I think it's an imperative that we come up with creative solutions. I have a number of ideas, and I have more seconds on the library call.
I'm very interested in tackling the morning commute issues, potentially hiring a part-time staffer, a full-time staffer, just to deal with morning and evening commute. And that would be things like secure a park and ride. I think we have a location for one. Potentially having a shuttle to the Millbury cattle train station. Potentially reviving school buses and creating a telecommute center and encouraging people to work at home by making it easier and less costly to have a home-based business. So, basically, to have an umbrella program and to tackle all those steps to relieve the community that works.
My more basic, infrastructure repair. Sewers, storm drains, sidewalks, roads. Our infrastructure is on the edge of collapse in a lot of places, and it's going to cost us a whole bunch of money, and it'll cost us a whole bunch of fines if it's a sewer or storm drain overflowing in the ocean. That's the problem over here. We spill something on the street, it goes right in the ocean, and then we get fines for that. And nothing's being done. Thank you.
I think an immediate one to be able to be addressed is make our parks look like parks and maintain our trails and support infrastructure.
Okay, thank you. And again, I understand that there are many, many things that you would love to accomplish, but, and you could speak, I'm sure, very eloquently for a long period of time, going over all the many things, but we just wanted to kind of get an idea of maybe some of your hot buttons, some of the things that you really are passionate about. So, now, since you've identified that, we're going to ask you the following question and allow you two minutes to answer, and that is, what is your plan to accomplish that goal?
We have parks, that many of which are weed fields, and I think it's shameful for our kids. We need family-friendly environments and locales that people can enjoy community in. This building is a classic example of a community gathering place. It's called a library, but 1,000 people a day in this community enjoy it. And those are students, those are workers, and those are seniors. So, to me, parks is an extension of that, where people can go and enjoy the open space that we have. The Poplar Beach area is a wonderful beach gathering spot, and yet the walkway has been deteriorated for six-plus years, the six years I've been here. The area out front, there are a few benches, but there's nothing else. It's not a park, and kids need things to do. And so, I encourage us, for the existing park bases that we have, let's fix them up. Let's make them look like parks. It's not a grand vision, it's just tackling what we have in front of us today. And coupled with that are really maintaining the trails. There are bike trails, there are walking trails, and they need to be maintained. There's a lot of excessive weed growth, and it's dangerous when bicyclists are, you know, racing by you. If you have to move over, you're in a thorn bush. Those are things that are great for the community, as well as attracting all the tourists that come and benefit from the beauty of Half Moon Bay. And lastly, coupled with all of that, is keeping them clean, maintaining trash receptacles, and making sure that the beach, and particularly in the hotel areas, that those beaches are maintained for the beauty of all of us and the environmental preservation.
Sorry, you were doing? Yeah, my, actually, my objective is simple. You get yourself a bid from a couple of contractors and give them the job. Fix the sidewalks. You get somebody else to go out, start cameraing, TVing these sewer lines, find out where they're broken, and start fixing them. I know where a whole lot of them are broken, because I've been working on them for 15 years. And all we have to do is go out and fix them. But the SAM, Sewer Authority Midcoast Site, is not repairing these sewer lines in Half Moon Bay or Granada or Montero. It's up each agency. So, it's Half Moon Bay's responsibility to fix them, and we don't. We just keep having, well, we call it hotspots. My crew goes out more often on some places, some of them every two months, to clean them, because if we don't, they will overflow. That stuff's got to be fixed. Been 15 years, and it's still sitting there, broken. And like I say, it's not hard to do. You just, you take some of the reserve money they have, I've heard it's near $26 million of reserve money for sewers, and use it, and start fixing things. It's, you know, not rocket science. It doesn't take years of fighting with the different agencies or whatever to get it done. It's just go and do it. You can call it an emergency, but most of them are. They're emergencies. You go down, you fix them, you know, and that's it. Kelly Street, storm drains, there's no storm drain from Highway 1 almost to the beach. All the, there's houses along Kelly Street that flood every time it rains. Why isn't there a storm drain there? Anyone that knows, you dig a ditch, throw a pipe in it, don't, it's done. You fix the problem. Ben Drini's or Happy Painting could probably do that in about a week's time. It's all you take, and your problem is gone. But no, instead, people get flooded every time we have rains. And it's that kind of stuff in a lot of places in Half Moon Bay that just don't get done. And I think it should.
So, the kind of programs I'm talking about are called TDA programs, transportation demand, TDM, transportation demand management. That's what the county calls it. So, first of all, I have to have buy-in from at least a majority of the city council to prioritize, you know, a set of actions related to my priority. In other words, I can't just impose my priority. I need people to buy into it, and then staff needs to step up and prepare an implementation plan. So, first, we have to identify staffing capacity. Who's going to make sure that they can work with the county and transportation agencies to receive grant monies that we might apply to the projects? Identify businesses that we might partner with, for instance, on a telecommute center. And then we have to look at our zoning code. How are we treating home-based businesses now? Are we charging too much in terms of business licenses? How do we protect the neighborhood from being overrun by delivery trucks and people visiting and that sort of thing? So, it starts out with consensus, moves to staff buy-in in terms of implementation, and then working with all the various government agencies and private partners that can help make it happen. School district, for instance, we would need to, you know, meet with them about the school bus issue. They've already made a decision. They don't want school buses. They can't afford school buses. A lot of parents don't want to put their kids on school buses. So, we have to cooperate with the school district on that issue. It might not work out. The park and ride, we actually, you know, have talked about a particular site. I don't know if it's going to work, but we need to jazz it up and make it, motivate people to use it. You know, maybe we have free coffee there and snacks, and maybe we take your dry cleaning with the cleaners or, you know, what have you. So, we have to have some creative conversations and brainstorm and let the best idea rise to the top about how we, you know, get this done. So, it's multifaceted. It's always, you know, people-driven and requires consensus.
So, the topic I chose was affordable workforce housing. Why did I start with workforce housing? So, to Debbie's point, I'd like to start with an issue that we already have, an incredible amount of consensus and support. Everyone I speak to in this community wants to be able to hire and retain the best teachers, the best police, the best firefighters. And the more that they can live here, the more we can retain best people. We can even, hopefully, down the road, afford packages to people. Hey, you work here, well, you get salary, but you also get a spot in affordable housing. So, how do we do that? Well, luckily, Half Moon Bay is, actually, already has a certain amount of expertise in building affordable housing. Expressions, what do we need by affordable? Well, right now, the line for affordability for low-income is a family income of $117,000, because we live in the Bay Area. Well, most teachers don't make that much money. A lot of other city workers don't. So, it's already, in a sense, low-income housing for city workers. We have incredible, successful programs here. We have Lindsay Gardens for seniors. We have Main Street Park, Half Moon Bay Village, built with money from Mid-Penn Housing. I would like to, the problem with Mid-Penn Housing is they have a 40/60 formula right now, so only 40% of it can be reserved for people living in the area, the other 60% can be for anyone. I'd like to see a combination of that, maybe change that ratio the other way around. And also, I've actually spoken to developers here who are quite willing to build affordable housing and just make a reasonable profit. They're willing to restrict the rent increases. They're willing to put in deed restrictions, which allows local folks to have top priority for that housing. So, it's another approach. It's an additional approach, and I'm happy to say that I've found developers who are actually quite interested in doing it. And I'm happy to say that I've found developers who are actually quite interested in doing that and giving back to the community. So I think we have a very bright future in that area.
Yeah, I spoke about open, transparent governments. And this is something I've been working on for the four years that I've been on council. We received an award for our Spanish net program from a local government award. I've gotten Spanish translating available at every council meeting. Headsets for anybody who wants to listen in to the translation. All of our website, our community newsletters, our emails, all go out in Spanish and in English. We're working now on our website. We have got a new portal which allows for more interaction between the public and the city website. I've been meeting on a bi-weekly basis with developers, contractors, and carpenters to try to figure out how to make their process go more smoothly and more quickly at City Hall. I'm going to have City Hall hire a community outreach person to work with seniors, to work with the youth, and to work with the Latino population. Those three are our target audiences, so that they can be brought into government. The other thing I'd like to do is develop somehow a program to get local folks interested in working in city government. That's going to be a harder thing to do, but I think we have so much talent here on the coast. And it goes to waste. People are out there with all these brilliant ideas and all this great expertise. If we can bring that into City Hall, then we make City Hall a more vibrant, more useful place to be. So that's what I'm headed for.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, I think we'll bring her back to this end of the table again. This next question, I'm going to allow you three minutes to respond. Again, you don't have to take all the three minutes if you don't want to, but something tells me you probably will. And the reason I'm allowing you a little bit more time on this is because of a couple of reasons. Number one, the topic is very passionate in our community. The lines are very well drawn, kind of a controversial thing. On the ballot for the November 6th election, there are five measures that are cannabis-related. Measures AA, GG, EE, SS, and MM. My question is, what is your position on each of these and why? Three minutes.
Well, as many of you know, I've been openly against marijuana cultivation in Half Moon Bay. I recently went to a youth leadership institute session put on here at one of the Half Moon Bay schools, at the Intermediate School. And the data is startling in terms of the impact on young people of drugs. And if you try drugs, you have a 30% chance of becoming addicted. But if you're under 17, it goes up to four to seven times more likely. So my view is, we live in a residential community. And I don't think we need to have marijuana cultivation here in Half Moon Bay. There are many examples. I've read a lot of studies. In particular, I focused on the five states that have had it for five-plus years because there's more quantifiable data. And the results are not positive. There's greater youth addiction, there's more hospitalizations, crime goes up, arrests have gone up. And I think, at least for me, one of the reasons to support marijuana being legal was the decriminalization of marijuana. But the impacts are negative, and I just don't think we need it. There are many communities in California that are experiencing challenges. Calaveras County has had growth for three-plus years. Their city council just cut it off. And so there'll be a lot of lawsuits in all likelihood because the farmers put in a lot of equipment and built down a lot of infrastructure for it. I just don't personally feel that it belongs in a residential community. Our Latino community has been against it. Workers who work in those farms, it's hard for them to influence their kids when their kids can come right back and say, "But Mom or Dad, you work producing marijuana. Why do you not want me to have it?" I'm not naive. I know we have a drug problem in our high school. But that doesn't mean you ignore it. I tend to try to focus on what can we do to reduce it, to minimize it. I was at a Woodside High School football game the other night, on Friday night. And the principal there has made tremendous inroads in the school. It was one of the worst schools in terms of drugs in the school. And over the years, she's made great strides. I would love to have our principal chat with her to learn some of the experiences. I believe our kids deserve us as adults to set a better example.
Yeah, I've said this before. I have no problem with GG. I believe that's the one that grow little bitty plants and then they ship them out of here. I have no problem with that at all. Some of Virginia's things, just tonight, I was watching Van Jones' show. He had, his first name is last name is Jealous, he's running for governor. Ben Jealous, running for governor of Maryland? Yeah. And he was talking about studying marijuana in Oregon and Colorado with those states helping him set up his platform for Maryland, and they had no problems. So I don't know which study you had and which study he had, but that's what I heard just tonight. It was funny, sitting there listening to it. And another thing I was hearing about is the marijuana leases stuff. How about alcohol? Are we going to ban alcohol sales in Half Moon Bay? We should. Alcohol probably kills more kids than marijuana ever will. And how many of them end up being alcoholics, end up being drunks, end up killing other people driving their cars? So if we're going to stop one drug, we should stop all. Or legalize the drug that's been being used in pretty great quantity ever since I was in high school in the 60s. Ever since then, it's been everybody uses it. Let's take the crime out of it. Let's quit throwing people in jail for it. You know, it's the same as alcohol. Drink and drive, you should get in trouble. If you're smoking dope and drive, you should get in trouble. Should get busted, should go to jail. But if you're sitting at home doing it, there shouldn't be a problem. You shouldn't be drug off and just... You can sit there and drink all you want, smoke a joint, you're going to prison. No, I don't see that. I just don't see a connection. And so I have no problem with the growing the little plants, shipping them out of here. I don't know about commercial, you know, retail sales and all that stuff. I have not really looked into. The other, I'll be honest, I don't even know what the other four propositions are about. I know they're about marijuana, but I haven't read them. I'm honest with the folks. So I don't really know. And so I'll have to read them before I vote. I still got two more weeks. Two weeks from Tuesday. Yes. Okay, and yeah, thank you.
So I've made a commitment to the public that I will abide by the direction of the voters on the November 6th ballot about the tax measure, the starter plants measure, and the advisory measures. So we're going to take your pulse and we're going to abide by that. But I became mayor about six weeks, or actually, a month after Prop 64 passed in November of 2016. And so it was overwhelming. It was close to 70%. It was over 69%. And so I was thinking like, so what do I do here? You know, the public seems to be overwhelming in support of legalization. I know that we have an ongoing pot culture on the coast side. We have an agricultural community that's struggling. So what's the answer here? So I looked more closely at what was driving legalization in California. And so the two guys in California that were basically taking the leadership role on this were Assemblymember Jim Wood and Senator Mike McGuire. They're from basically the Emerald Triangle, right? Everything north of the Bay Area, they pretty much represent. And so what was going on there was very disturbing to them. And Jim Wood, by the way, is a physician. So there's a serious environmental degradation going on. There's clear-cutting of forests, including old-grown redwoods. There's destruction of streams and removal of vegetation, which of course is harmful for fish. There's lots of toxic pesticides and herbicides, and there is violence. So according to Senator McGuire, there's the presence of Mexican and Eastern European drug cartels in Northern California, running grows. Okay? So they're making a ton of money off of illegal cannabis. And where do you think that money's going? You know, is it going to buy guns? Is it going to Mexico to support gangs? Is it going to support violence against elected officials in Mexico? You know, where's this money going? So our state legislators decided that, you know, they looked back at prohibition and decided that the solution was to legalize, regulate, and tax. And voters agreed with that and supported Prop 64. So that said, there's still the issue of what's right for our community. So we decided it was important to have a conversation and to look at all the various aspects, whether it was manufacturing, commercial cultivation of mature plants. Starter plants make sense because we have nurserymen who are already doing starter plants. They're ornamental flowers, but they're four-inch pots, you know, 12-inch pots, et cetera. So they're already doing that, and they're suffering. And it had very limited impact. So we thought that was a good solution to put on the ballot. It allowed some farmers who wanted to do it to grow with a minimum of impact, no THC in the plants, et cetera. The taxation's important because people are already getting deliveries of cannabis. You know, something like 1,100 households on the coast side have deliveries of cannabis. We should be taxing that, right? So you need to, I would recommend voting for the taxation measure because you can only put taxation measures on the ballot during general elections. We would have to wait here. The rest are advisory measures. It's up to you.
Well, first I want to say that I agree with Deborah, that I also agree to follow the will of the folks in terms of how they vote. I feel that if we put these initiatives on the ballot, regardless of whether we call them advisory or not, you know, what's the point of saying we want people's advice? And then for the opposite of that. However, let me be clear on a few issues. The issue here is making spot pot legal, right? Proposition 64 passed. I voted for Proposition 64. It was to decriminalize personal use of pot. Because at that point, only medical marijuana was legal. And I totally agree with that. However, when it comes to growing, the question is whether or not we want our community to be a cannabis-growing community. And it's really a very personal and emotional decision, you know, what you want the community to be. And there's a lot of unknowns involved. And that's why we're taking in all this information, what's happening here, what's happening there, you know? I think it's... And for me, I think since so much remains unknown, I think it's a sort of issue that we wait. That's what a lot of Peninsula communities decided. Palo Alto and other other communities, let's see what's going on in other places and wait. I've participated in a number of community meetings on this topic, spoken with residents, farmers, head of the Latino Advisory Council here, who knows and represents a lot of farm workers. And actually, I'm somewhat convinced that most folks don't really want our farmland to become utilized for cannabis crops. And it's become an issue about the use of some greenhouses. And what I've noticed and observed is it's mostly for the benefit of, you know, three farmers who are interested, who have been struggling. I think we should do things for farmers who are struggling. I'm just not convinced that this is the right solution. Instead, I think we should think about, you know, maybe making Half Moon Bay, you know, the Center for State-of-the-Armed, State-of-the-Armed Farming, State-of-the-Armed Organic Farming. Making relationships with Davis, bringing students, interns. That's what I would like to see, how we might solve some of the agricultural issues instead of converting it all to cannabis. And I think we'd have a lot of support for that. Less controversy. From what I know, I live right near Rocket Farms. They originally wanted to allow their greenhouses to be used for cannabis, and now maybe they're pulling back from that because they're hearing from the community. And we've all heard from the community in various community meetings where there's been quite a bit of opposition. So I figure, let's pay attention to the community, and maybe we should wait.
And this was one of the most difficult decisions I had to make in this last year on council. I started out believing that because our agricultural industry was dying, and we have good examples of that, that starter plants, nursery plants would be a good solution for our farmers who are already working on starter plants in the floral industry. Takes very little water, energy efficient. The starter plants are not psychoactive. They're not a target for people. Nobody wants to steal a non-psychoactive four-inch pot of cannabis. So I had no objection to it. And what changed my mind about it was listening to the Latino community. During our listening session, the Latino community came out and said, "Don't do this to us. We are scared to death of ice. And if we become known as a town that sells cannabis, we're going to be double targets." That to me seemed like the only reasonable argument that I heard from anybody in the committee, either for or against it. So I made the decision that I was not going to make the decision, that I leave it up to the public. We said we want the public to tell us what they want from our government, and this is a great chance to let the community decide. There are people out there who are pro-cannabis from the beginning of starter plants all the way out to retail stores. And there are people that are violently against anything. It's a democracy. Vote on it. Vote on it, for God's sake. However you vote, I don't care, as long as you vote. Measure AA is the taxation vote. You should definitely, I'm going to say you should vote yes on, because it's foolish not to. We need to tax the delivery of marijuana that comes into our town. Need some revenue from that. It's absurd to give that away. In terms of starter plants, personally, I'm still for them. But it's not my decision. It's the community's decision. So I'm going to leave it up to you guys to figure out what you want. That's Measure GG, the nursery plants. The other measures have to do with retail sales, with full chain, and with manufacturing, things like oils, that type of thing. So read the issues, the pros and the cons, make up your mind. For God's sake, vote on it.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for weighing in on that. Now, one of the things we would like to do in this next segment is we would like to have some interaction. Prior to this next session, everyone has spoken to you. Now, we wish them to speak to each other in a civil matter, of course. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to bring it back down here. It's easier for me just to go back and forth. Otherwise, I have to go in the middle and down and round, and it's over my head. I can't do that. So let's bring it back down to the end of the table here. What we're going to do, now listen very carefully to this, okay? I don't want to confuse you. Each of you will have an opportunity to ask a question of somebody else at this table. And I want you to not do more than 30 seconds. I don't want you to make a five-minute, you know, rambling thing to finally get to your question, if you would indulge me, please. 30 seconds to ask a question of somebody else at this table. The person you ask has two minutes to respond to your question. The next person can either ask somebody else at the table, one of the other four, or they can continue the conversation that has already been started. So if something has been said, they can use their two minutes to continue on that particular topic. Got it?
Sort of.
No, sort of, okay. This is a test of your organizational skills, okay?
We don't mind you repeating a little bit.
All right, and I'll guide you. But again, the idea is that each of you can ask one other person at the table a question on any subject that you wish, okay? Hopefully, something that pertains to the election. And the person has two minutes to respond to your question. The next person next to you can either, A, ask a new question of somebody else at the table, or they can continue to talk about what is already in play by somebody else. or they can continue to talk about what is already in play by somebody else. Okay? Okay, very good. So with that having been said, you get to ask the question, 30 seconds to ask a question of somebody else, two minutes to respond.
I'll ask Debbie. My understanding is you didn't support the new library through the votes. Can you explain that to us?
I absolutely support the library. I did agree with certain citizens that questions should be asked about the size and the cost of the original proposed library, which was about 10,000 square feet more than the building that we've ended up with. I also was concerned about the finance mechanism, right? So that all had been worked out to our favor. The county offered a low cash loan. We scaled back the museum to something that was more manageable and easier to maintain. As it is, the library's probably going to cost a half a million dollars a year in maintenance, because it's a state-of-the-art, zero-net-energy building that's basically driven by artificial intelligence. So if it were 10,000 square feet larger, can you imagine what it would cost then? So I raised good, critical questions, doing my job on behalf of the public. But when it came to a solution that seemed to meet the various tests for affordability and ability to maintain and the funding mechanism, I got right behind it. In the last two or three years, I've cast 20, 30 votes on various aspects of the library. I've become a champion of the library, as everybody knows. So I was kind of opposed to it, but I asked tough questions about the size and scale and worked with citizens, one of them sitting here in the back, David of Lobey, to come up with a better solution.
Okay, John, you have the floor.
I can ask anybody anything, or?
That's true. If you want to talk about the library, feel free. Or you can ask a new question of any of the others.
Deborah Penrose. Okay, what is going to happen with the SAM collection contract in June? And how much of that can end up costing the city more than they're paying right now for the collection work? Collections clean the sewers, as we call it, this collection contract with the city, and we charge a certain amount. Anyway, can you explain all that?
Yeah, the city took over the collection service because we felt that SAM was not doing the job we wanted them to do and that it would be more efficient to do it in-house. So that's sort of the basis for the argument. What's going to happen in June? I don't know. We haven't even seen what, so far, they've been doing a good job. But I don't, I don't know what's going to happen this next year until June. June will decide that. And how much it's going to cost, I don't know that either. I don't keep figures like that in my head. But I know that it is economically better for the city to use the firm that we're using currently and not to be using SAM for our collections.
So instead of asking a question, I'm going to elaborate on that. So as you know, we had some major sewage spills in 2017. And it involved inspections, investigations, and penalties from the Regional Water Quality Control Board. And we had somebody come out from the regional board to investigate practices at SAM. And they drew up a list of things that were considered, you know, weaknesses in how we operate the system. And based on those recommendations, our attorney recommended, from a risk-management point of view, that we, in addition to maintaining our own collection system, that we, instead of just having SAM take care of all those things, that we actually, potentially hire a private entity to, with lots of experience with sewer pipes, to set up a program of cleaning the pipes and reporting. Reporting was a big weakness, by the way, identified by the regional board. And that we work with sewer authority of the coast side, existing staff, including John, to develop our best management practices, come up with a manual that everybody could agree on, a foundation for moving forward. And originally, we had thought, well, maybe we'll just give the contract to a private firm altogether, 100%. But we decided, because we liked the people at SAM and because they've been there, they know the system, that the best thing to do is a hybrid approach, to have somebody consult with us to make sure the procedures were adequate, but to also do some training with SAM, existing SAM staff, and make sure that the whole operation was moving up to a higher level of quality and a lower level of risk.
I have a question for Virginia. When we were in one of the first forums, when we spoke about affordable housing, and I think I've already talked about how we have some terrific affordable low-income housing communities here in Half Moon Bay, including Lindsay Gardens for seniors, Half Moon Bay, Half Moon Village, Main Street Park. And you mentioned that we have to be very careful not to have all our affordable housing below income because that creates slums and ghettos. And I was wondering, based on the experience in Half Moon Bay, I don't think we have any slums and ghettos. In fact, did a little online research. We actually have a 60% lower crime rate than the entire country. And in the Bay Area, we actually have one of the lowest crime rates in all the communities. So I was wondering.
Elaborate.
I think there was misinterpretation of what I was trying to get at with respect to that. All I was saying was, I think we need to ensure for developers that they're mixed-use complexes. And in the Half Moon Bay review, it was written up that many families are living, two to three families, under one roof. And I didn't think that was a constructive thing for the kids or for any of the families. And so my view is, I want to ensure that one family is able to afford to live in a house, either a house or an apartment, but that they're not multiple families being forced by virtue of affordability to live together. And so that was what I was relating to. And I don't think that's what the Half Moon Bay community is all about. That's not what I look for in terms of housing. And it's about making people feel as if they're part of a community and that there are services and enhancements so that you don't just put poor people in one area and isolate them. It's a community environment, and that we should have mixed complexes that developers are willing to build, that have various levels of affordability of the housing. And it's really a view of, I want families to feel that they can afford to live here and have sufficient space for their families so that multiple families are not forced to live together.
Okay, Deborah Penrose, you have the last question.
I'd like to ask anybody on the panel to answer this. I don't have anybody in particular in mind. But my question is, the thing that's come up for me that seems important is how do we get the talent in our community involved in city government? How do we do that? What approach do we take to do it? Do we, do we create more committees, more advisory boards? What's your idea about how we do it? And Robert, if you could start.
Okay, what we're going to do on this, since this is kind of a variation of the theme. I talked to our judges in the other room, and they said that we would go ahead and do this. So again, I want to leave time for questions from the audience, but this will be the last round before we go to the audience. So I would say that the question can be answered, let's, a minute?
A minute each.
I have a minute.
You think? Okay, a minute response from each body on the table.
Great question. It also relates to why I decided to run. A couple of years ago, Suzanne and I were in the inaugural class of what was called the NET Program here in Half Moon Bay. It gets people involved in city government. It's a six-week program. 25 folks come, so you'll meet your neighbors. And we have people represent, representing from all the different agencies in city government, including city council members, including heads of departments. And it was around four sessions, and we learned an incredible amount of city government. We networked, they gave us, how do you make decisions if you have so much money to spend on all these competing priorities? I'd love to see that program continue, expanded, expanded into the schools and the high schools, and get more people to participate. Because you start getting engaged and really jazzed up. Wow, this is how to make things work. I'd like to play here, you know? This is great, because now I understand it. It's not all a mystery. Plus, you get to read the Half Moon Bay Review, and you actually know the people who are named in it. And it builds a real nice sense of community. At least, that's the impact it has.
Yeah, I think building community is sort of a good starter. You know, so we've been really building each year the National Night Out. We've gone from like six to 12, and then to, I think, about 40? 35 or 40 neighborhood block parties. And, you know, we go to those, and we meet people, and people meet their neighbors, and they hear what's going on. So instead of just walking down the street with your head down and your dog, you know, you're actually engaging. And I think that in combination with the NET Program, there are several people who attended the NET Program here. I think that's great. One thing I do when people have issues that they're concerned about or complain about, I think, you know, what are they really interested in here? And I just say, would you be interested in scaling up on this issue and maybe taking it on, working with other people? Like on the litter issue, coastal cleanup? And one person said, you know, yeah, I think that's where I can make a difference. So it's finding, you know, where people have strengths and what their interests are, and trying to match them up with opportunities. A lot of that happens on a case-by-case basis.
I think the best way to do it is get new city council with an atmosphere that they want the people of the coast to be involved with the city. Every time you turn around, it's another contractor being hired. You just told me you were going to hire contractors from Cupertino. Two organizations from Cupertino are going to come up here, take away the jobs of five people that live, work, and play in Half Moon Bay, just like your commercials say. They're only going to lose their jobs. It's a good possibility we'll lose our jobs. I'll retire. It's no big deal for me. But that's the kind of attitude the city has. It's always, go to a contractor. We can go get some contractors somewhere else, you know, to take over. And that just doesn't have an atmosphere of, we want local people in there. We want contractors from over the hill someplace. They're apparently smarter than us. They're better at it than us, even though we've been doing it for 30 years. They can do it better. They're from Cupertino. They can come over and stand around and watch us. That's what they're doing now. $186,000 a year, these outfits being paid to stand and watch my guys work.
Well, my background has been in tech venture capital for much of my career. And I had a lot of relationships and can help bring tech incubation opportunities into Half Moon Bay, if that's desirous. And one of the things I mentioned early on was about programs with Cal Davis for agriculture. We can set up programs with the high school. We can set up programs where the greenhouses can be taken over for part of the time, things of that sort. I've also done a lot with the homeless shelter. Life moves over the bay. And, you know, that's been good experience for me, to meet and interact with different people, but it's been hands-on work. And I look to bring those resources. Like I mentioned, the principal in Woodside High. I have a lot of different relationships, but we should leverage good things that have been going on in other areas of the Bay Area to help us with ideas and initiatives here in Half Moon Bay. We're not going to know it all, but we can leverage the talent and expertise.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for that question. I hadn't thought of that particular scenario, but that's, that's good. Well, that completes our first hour. And now it's your turn to have a chance to ask your question of the people that are running for office. So we have some that have been turned in. If anybody has any that has not been turned in, my lovely bride will now stand. And if you have any, you can hand to her also, my dear. If you'll check in the back and see if any are still in the back, ready for delivery. Oh, there they go. Look at that. All right. We'll do our best, you know? There's only so many questions here that we can, we can go through. We'll try to be as fair as possible. So in the interest of time, I'm going to ask a question, and let's say, no more than two minutes for a response, okay? And even that may be generous with all that we have here before us. But again, nobody says that there's a law that you have to speak for two minutes. It's not a contest to see how close you can come, all right? If you can, if you can get your message across in a minute and a half, we thank you. But we will allow you two minutes. So starting at, where did we end up? Oh, okay. I guess we can start here and work backwards, whatever. Okay, so here's the question. And for those of you that are currently on the council, do you think I can read that?
It says, do we need a two-minute break to stand up and stretch?
Do we need a two-minute break to stand up and stretch? Oh, could we have? Okay. Well, I guess we could. The only thing is, once you release the herd, it's hard to get them back. Lock the door, okay? Well, if anybody has to, if anybody has to leave for any reason, feel free, okay? But we do want to get you out of here in a timely manner. I know many of you have to go to work tomorrow. So let's start here, and let's say, no more than two minutes, okay? And the, hmm?
One minute.
Oh, look at that. Are you trying to make me like you or something? Okay, so let's, yeah, I mean, if you're would-be politicians and politicians, you should not be pithy. Okay, so a minute response to each question. And for you who are already on the city council, understand that you may have newcomers, diversity, we talked about that. So the question is equal for everybody, and we'll start down here with Virginia. How do you plan to gain the consensus of your fellow council members in order to obtain the minimum of three votes to take any council action? How are you a team player?
My superpower is actually collaborating with individuals inside and outside our organization to help get a transaction done. And I do that by first ensuring that we gather all the facts. And like a jury should, you don't come in with any preconceived notions. You analyze the data, debate the data, discuss the data before any, anybody forms opinions. And you try to work through solutions that are the best for the community. You take community input, and then you calibrate and discuss the issue. There are different elements as well in terms of short-term and longer-term priorities. So I think those also need to be evaluated. There are certain projects that we can do, but we shouldn't belabor staff with too many intermittent changes. Let staff work on various projects, and let's not give them, you know, 10 new ones to do.
As a union steward, both at phone company, Pac Bell, AT&amp;T, whatever you want to call it, and here at SAM, I have argued new contracts with management in both places. And I don't want to blow my own horn, but I'm pretty good at it.
So first of all, there's a law called the Brown Act that prohibits, you know, more than two council members discussing an issue that would be coming before them with each other. And you also have to worry about serial media. So you can't talk to one person, and that person tells another council member, you know, what you said, and build consensus that way. So part of it is, you have an idea, you ask, that you put on the agenda, and if one other person agrees to consider it, and it's sort of a professional courtesy, it's on the agenda. In the meantime, you do homework behind it. You talk to members of the public to see, you know, are there alternative ways of addressing the problem? Do they have ideas of their own? And you come prepared to a meeting to discuss it. And usually, you don't start out with a staff report on an issue. You come just for general discussion. So, you know, I listen to my fellow council members. I listen to the public and see what their concerns or issues are. And then, you know, I tweak what I'm thinking about often. And then, if it seems like we're getting on the same page, staff will put a staff report, an action item, or further discussion on the agenda. So a lot of it is listening and doing homework.
I'm still on the superpowers, because I think maybe we'll all have caves. So when I think about what I bring to the table...
So when I think about what I bring to the table, I've done a lot of very sophisticated conflict facilitation in my day, very emotional. And I've been brought in as an expert on conflict facilitation. So conflict doesn't worry me. I think we have basic human needs. We all have a basic three human needs. To be heard, to be understood, and if you're lucky in life, to be loved. Well, we'll just focus on those first two. It's a good, because that's my favorite definition of consensus. If everyone in a room has a different opinion, has the chance to be respectfully heard and understood, there's a much better chance that they will go along with the decision, even though they don't completely agree with it. And that's how you build commitment. And making sure you have a culture of being heard and respectfully understood in any organization, including the city council.
Yeah, on council, we have at every council meeting, we've got usually three to six things that we have to vote on. And I found it to be a fascinating process. It's not hard. You do your homework, you listen to your fellow council members, you take into account what they said, and then you vote. And the way it's worked for me for the past four years is most of our decisions have been five to zero. A lot of them have been four to zero, and one or two of them have been less than that. But very few of them. For the most part, we do listen to each other, we respect each other's opinions, and we learn from each other, and we reach a consensus. It doesn't have to be five to zero, but it often is.
Okay, one of the members of the audience is expressing a frustration. And that is, when I contact or write to city council, I get no reply. Why? How can you change this?
You know, you haven't contacted me, that's all I can say. I have never, ever not responded, it's, I'll put it a positive way. I respond within twenty-four hours. Usually, I respond within a few hours to every email that I get. So, you know, if you're not getting heard, email me. You know, and I'll do what I can, I'll get the answer for you. If I don't have the answer, I direct you to the correct staff person. I CC the staff person and say, look, answer this person's question. Take care of this person's problem. It's not hard.
Well, I love the luxury of having, knowing that there is a very professional staff in City Hall. And if someone sends me a question, and if I think I don't have an immediate answer, I can't get it, you know, within a couple of hours, I'll get back to that person and say, look, you know, I'm researching this issue, I'm trying to find out. Might take a day or two. And just keep making sure there's good communication, so they know that it's being addressed, not being ignored. And it's essential, that's the role of city government, to get back to folks, especially in a small town where we all know each other's names and meet each other in safe light. So, yeah, that's a critical thing, to get back to folks, thanks.
Yeah, I don't understand the question. I respond almost immediately, but always within twenty-four hours. And I also leave the door open for them to ask for additional information. And if I don't know the answer, I go to staff. We've developed a very responsive staff. And usually, they'll either respond to me or directly to the person. So, you know, it's probably one of the thousand emails that I've not responded to. And that's only because it's been buried in so many emails. But my policy is very prompt response, and I think I'm pretty good at that. So, sorry if you're not being heard. Let us know, but persist.
If I was there, it would be the last email you're sending to the City Hall, because I'd be answering you.
I too have a policy of trying to answer all emails as quickly as I can. And if I don't have the answer, responding that, thank you for your solicitation, and we'll try to get you a good response from someone within the city. I think that's been the standard answer across the board from this group.
Okay, thank you. Our next question for our council candidates is this. Is our 1% growth rate just right, not enough, or too much?
I haven't done a specific math, but just from hearing the needs of the community, it's too little. We need more affordable housing. It's a problem across the Bay Area. And we're fortunate in some respects. Although housing is high, it is a bit lower here in Half Moon Bay. It's a desirable community. It's a community that people are very interested in. I know they've added ADUs. I'm interested in doing infill. And as much of the new development that is permitted to be more affordable housing for the community versus hotels and RV parks. For the community, including seniors, young people, working families, across the board.
I'm not really sure the numbers, isn't it that we haven't ever hit 1%? We haven't hit 1% in, I don't know how long, ever since it's been put out there. So I guess it's just right, we haven't got to it, but we still need more housing. And if we got to 1%, we haven't now. Did anybody see that article in the papers this morning? Brisbane, they're voting on something. They want to build twenty-two hundred houses in Brisbane. And they were threatened by Senator Jerry Hill that if they didn't do it, put it on the ballot, he was gonna pass, have the state law passed, the state would take away their property and build forty-four hundred houses. That's, it's kinda scary. I mean, yeah. Never heard of such a thing, but that was front page of the Chronicle this morning. Thank you.
Actually, the city's growth rate is one and a half percent in the downtown core area. So if you're doing mixed-use or affordable housing developments, you can go up to one and a half percent. And I would support, you know, building more housing within that one and a half percent cap within the downtown areas. That's where I'd like to build. We're not, we're not reaching our goal. You know, we're probably not even doing half. The county's rate is 1%, and they're doing just fine, thank you. And I think if anything, if we wanted to apply, you know, more water and sewer to affordable housing and doing it downtown, I'd be in favor of a moratorium on the construction of executive homes. You know, homes that are 2,000 square feet and above. Those houses bring in a little bit of impact fee at the beginning, but they cost more to serve and they bring in revenue. So housing is always not a good deal. But you wanna meet your social goals and provide for a diverse community. But you want to regulate the amount of housing that you build relative to commercial revenue-producing property.
Yeah, in terms of that 1% goal, I mean, the goal, the goal for me is having the affordable housing. You know, start out with workforce housing, see what else is needed in the community. And if that's the goal, then whether it's 1%, one and a half percent, we come back to the community and say, okay, here's some of the costs of some of this development. Will some of it add some traffic? Well, hopefully not, if it's workforce housing. At least it's not gonna be people having to travel, right, over nine, I bet they'll over ninety-two, because it'll be local. So I think it depends on the growth, and what kind of growth we're talking about. I'd rather see that workforce housing. A lot of our income also comes from a hotel occupancy tax. So again, if you don't want hotels, fine, but as a community, we all need to understand. Here's the revenue, what will we substitute for that? Do you wanna pay for other things? And there are other ways of raising revenue, I think, than building hotels, more hotels. But again, we wanna educate the public, get their input and opinions.
Yeah, as others have said before me, we haven't come near to our 1% growth here in Half Moon Bay. And in the downtown, it is one and a half percent. So if we haven't gotten anywhere near that growth rate, I'm not sure why we're worried about increasing the percentage of growth that we want in the city. I think if it comes to the point where we hit one and a half percent in downtown, and we still have a great need, then we put it back on the ballot again and say, okay, folks, what do you want? Do you wanna move it up to 3%? Do you wanna leave it at 2%? Where do you wanna go with it? Anything we can do to keep our coastal blocks from being developed with more McMansions, I'm for.
Has everybody spoken?
Yes.
Oh, okay, good. By the way, I just want to say that in the questions that are coming my way, and I'm trying to focus on ones that everybody can respond to. And then, as time permits, I'll go to some of the other ones, because I don't wanna just, for the lack of a better word, you know, beat up on two or three people by asking them questions over and over. Because I know that among you, there are supporters of various people up here. And you might just want to target your questions for one type of person. But we'll do our best to cover all these as time permits. Now, this is an interesting question. And you can, I guess, Deborah Penrose, you have it, you have the mic, so I'll let you start. The person writes the following. "The definition of public service is what you do when no one is looking. Please list three things you have done for your community in the past twelve months. Incumbents, please limit your answers to personal X."
I need that question explained better. I, you know, I'm not gonna tell you what I do on my time off.
We don't wanna hear it.
I'm willing to tell you three things I've done. And I'll just do that, okay? So the first thing I did was working with the Latino community. And that's been a big one with me. I've gotten translators at every council meeting. I've got headsets for all the people that want to listen to a Spanish translation of the English at council meetings. I've gotten, endorsed the Spanish Net Program, as well as the other Net Programs. I've had everything translated into Spanish, as I've said before. The other thing I've done is convince the staff to hire a community outreach person. And I've established quarterly neighborhood meetings. So that in November, we're all gonna go out, or two of the council people will go to the Lutheran Church. And the community around the Lutheran Church will have a town hall meeting where there'll be full and open discussion between constituents and council members.
Speaking for myself personally, and character is what you do when nobody else is looking, including public. I like the question. Our family's been here for a long time, and I'm proud of the fact that we engage in a lot of public activities, charity and support activities. Personally, I've done a lot of work contributing to our CEF, Community Education Fund. Volunteering, we volunteer every year for Pumpkin Fest, where we always have a photo booth. Adopt a Family is one of my favorite activities, where we go out and buy and wrap gifts for those who are less privileged. Taste of the Coast for senior coast siders. And you know what I've learned in the last Pillar Point cleanup? Gathered up 300 pounds of garbage, lots of cigarette butts. You know where all that garbage mostly was located, concentrated? In front of the RV park and the hotel. So I think that is good education and tells us, any kind of growth you wanna do, we wanna make sure those folks are cleaning up the areas right in front of them, so it doesn't all have to be all in the volunteers, excuse me, all the time, thank you.
So I'm a proud member of the Odd Fellows. So I do a lot of different things with them. They're actually a charitable organization, but we also do very fun things. I participate in the Coastside Hope's monthly Adopt a Family, so it's not just Christmas, but it's buying important goods like toilet paper and paper towels and shampoo and that sort of thing for a family. And I've been doing that every month for six years. And I do participate in other Coastside Hope activities, including the Adopt a Family Program at Christmas. I actually do a lot of hiking around town to see what's going on, get a ground-eye view of problems that are happening in the community, so I can exercise and have fun, and hopefully see what's going on, run into people, and hear their concerns.
I spent last Sunday all day long with Gordy, the giant mascot pumpkin of the Pumpkin Festival. I'm his handler. I'm the guy that has the funny orange and pumpkiny soup that runs around with him. I've cleaned up, I don't know how much garbage and dog poop with the resource, Conservation District, with Post, Coastal Land Trust. Anytime they have one of their cleanups, I'm out there doing it. I can take, I have a timeshare in Cancun. When we go down there, me and my two grandsons, who are now 12 and 9, we go out with plastic bags and clean up their beaches. And it's sort of, it's kinda weird, but as tourists, we do it. We figure, plastic, somebody's gonna, you know, some turtle's gonna be plastic, some out here, maybe a dolphin or somebody else. Plastic's no good in the ocean. So, yeah, I do a whole lot of that kinda stuff. You'll see me just walking on the free picket of garbage, just for the heck of it. And, yeah, and then donate to all different kinds of places. Human Rights Campaign, Southern Law, Pottery Law Center, and other places, bye.
I've participated in the coastal cleanup. I volunteered to raise money for the swimming pool at the concert in the park. I actually clean up my own block. I do sweeping on the street, as well as clear the brush off the fire lane. I help my neighbors. I volunteer for the homeless at Life Moves. At Christmas time, I buy all the kids toys and shoes, and I adopt multiple families throughout the year.
Okay, thank you. Well, this next question should be a little easier, okay? It's very straightforward, and we'll start with you, since you have the microphone right now. That is, do you support re-establishing the Architectural Review Committee?
That's an interesting question. I don't have a specific thought on that particular topic. I'd like to know more about it, what's not being done, what was done before. So I don't wanna just throw something out without really studying upon it.
No. I actually believe that we need some sort of an Architectural Review Function. I don't know if it's reviving an Architectural Review Committee of, you know, new citizens sitting regularly. It might be that we have a contract architect or a designer that's part of planning staff that can look at projects. Or we could have a small subcommittee of the Planning Commission. We desperately need some sort of review. And I don't think it's appropriate for the Community Development Director to be making those calls in administrative hearings during daytime hours herself, because she's not an architect. So I think we need something, I'm not sure of the exact answers yet.
Yeah, I think whether it's Planning Commission or a subdivision, which I like that ideal, so, you know, we really need a consistent expertise. You know, a lot of these positions are volunteer, they're not given a date. So we need a consistent expertise of folks who understand the issues or can really pick up speed quickly as to what's gone on in the past and where we're going in the future, understand the local coastal plans, our master plans, so that any kind of construction is consistent with that and understands some of the unique issues in building on the coast. And I think people have a much more trust in the entire planning process if they know that expertise is always there and are relying on that.
Yeah, I've had several discussions with people on the Planning Commission with different architects in town, and I am definitely in favor of an Architecture Review Committee. I have no problem with it. I think we've got good people here in town, people that have served before, people that would like to serve. We're an eclectic town. We don't have a style. We don't need a style. But we do need to keep extreme styles out of our town. So I'd like to have somebody overseeing that that has good taste, good sense, and can help the Planning Commission who is overworked and really is not qualified to be Architectural Review. They're wonderful planning commissioners, and like our Community Development Director, that's not their expertise. So I want the Architecture Review Committee.
Okay, thank you. Since you again ended up with a microphone, I'll let you start on the return trip. Another easy-to-answer question. What environmental organizations have endorsed you?
Everyone I asked for. The Sierra Club, the Coastside Democrats, the Coastside Progressive Democrats, the San Mateo County Democrats, SANCAR, which is the Realtor Association, the Dend Fems, which is a subset of the County Democrats for Women, and the LGBT... is a subset of the County Democrats for Women, and the LGBTQT Committee Bayneck. In addition to that, Jerry Hill, Jackie Spear, Don Horstwee, Warren Swobom, Mark Berman, I don't know, two or three other politicos. But I got the endorsement, anybody that I asked and the Labor Council. So I've been very blessed.
Was the question?
Environmental? Yeah, the question is, have any environmental organizations endorsed you?
I'm sorry. I thought it was what?
I wasn't sure.
Well, specifically, it was environmental.
I apologize, folks.
I could love you. I always think I should have asked more, but, well, having worked for the EPA, I was very proud of getting the Sierra Club endorsement. It was an interview process, they asked me a lot of questions. And environmental, you know, we have such a delicate ecosystem on the coast here. So, you know, dunes, don't speak jargon, I don't even know if you call them dunes anymore from the time I used to come out here 30 years ago. They're hills and mounds and I like, love them, but it's a very delicate ecosystem and we know about all the, you know, coastal erosion going on. So I was very proud of that. I've gotten very similar endorsements from local democratic clubs and labor and have one Bay Review, which I hope is for the environment. And I'm very proud to have the endorsement of our mayor, in fact, the everyone on the city council. And they know it's not that because I agree with every single thing they say, but I think they perceive me as someone who's very pro-environment and is willing to collaborate and work collectively on those issues.
I'm very proud to have the Sierra Club endorsement and I have all the same endorsements as Dr. Penrose, including the Haplem Bay Review and the San Mateo Business Journal. I do work for the California Coastal Conservancy, so they have a long record of conservation and working for the environment, so that's probably why I got the Sierra Club endorsement.
All I've got is my four grandkids and my wife. Everyone was really endorsing me.
I have Joe Conchette, who was representing surf riders versus the note Kozla. I have Coast Tigers Against Marijuana, the San Mateo Business Journal and SAMCAR and some other individual, Prime Mayor.
Okay, well, that was pithy, wasn't it? Okay, well, prior to the evening's forum, I had the pleasure of trying to get to Newleaf to get the coffee and everything back there. And it was a minefield, okay? I mean, I said to myself, why did I ever pick this time to have a candidate for? I mean, people were going down every alleyway, alleyway, every, every street was gridlocked in trying to get through town. There was no way except just get in there and hope for the best, right? So I can kind of relate to this. Next question, and I guess we'll start with you, Virginia, since you have it. It says, "Do you have any ideas about alleviating weekend traffic problems in Haplem Bay?"
I do. First and foremost, I think we need a traffic cop during the peak congestion times. You know, simply relying on the lights and then people block the box. I think there are too many access points that people are coming to the same location. And I would opt to close Main Street access over the Main Street Bridge to get onto Highway 92. And I would prefer, same thing from the side where Ace comes out, close those pathways off and have everything be routed off of Highway 1 so that it's from one central point that can be monitored with a traffic guard and create flow. Flow is the issue. And, you know, I can't tell you how many people say, you know, I love coming to Haplem Bay, but I'll never come back again. I'll never come to the Pumpkin Festival again because they spend hours on the freeway. So to not do anything and expect a different result is foolish.
Well, yeah, we definitely need a cop. I just, I was coming home today from down near your neighborhood. I was hanging in Doorhangers. So I do go over weekends, I hang doorhangers with my picture on it. Anyway, yeah, it was just, light turns green, I thought, oh boy, here we go, I have a second car back, it's clear. And after it turns green, four more cars come to the left turn lane on the 92. And then we sit. Light turns red, light turns green. Those guys are still sitting there. I mean, so we went through two complete cycles of the intersection. And, yeah, that's the greatest. How about this one? Foilill Boulevard.
So the city council recently approved a set of actions for the weekend, including having a sign at the intersection of 92 and Highway 1, northbound, you know, basically saying no right turns, but also levying a $500 fine. And then we're going to match that with more enforcement in the intersection on the weekend. We've also approved having a no right turn on red where Main Street intersects Highway 92. And that will be for peak commute hours on the weekend. So you'll have to go to Highway 92. Also, we're going to put temporary, I don't know what you call them, a temporary barrier so that when you're going northbound on 1 and merging onto Highway 92, that you have to stay in that right lane longer before crossing over. That way you're not blocking cars. So we make the left turn on Highway 1 southbound, you know, and causing congestion that way. So it is about flow and we've taken those steps. And what we're waiting for is approval from Caltrans because you need encroachment permits to do those things. So I think that's going to help.
Traffic. Well, one thing I've learned to do is, because we live in such a wonderful place, you know, there's times where I go into a meditational state, turn the grateful bit, use it up a little louder, say, okay, this is the price of living here, maybe get up a little earlier. But I think it's important, you know, to take a moment, you know, to be grateful that we live in such a terrific place that people do want to come and visit. And it's an interesting issue to have and luckily, you know, we're not Flint, Michigan. People love to come here and, you know, so we have some traffic. I'm happy to see everyone agreeing with this idea of a traffic cop or somebody, because I know it's something I brought up in our very first forum. And, you know, we've known that works. You know, Lemos Farm sometimes has brought in that person during really pink pumpkin air time, pumpkin purchasing and Pumpkin Festival. And when people see a traffic control person, they stop doing a lot of the weird stuff and that's good. And also you have a person eyeballing things, okay, go this way, go that way. So it's someone right on the scene. So I think that's a great idea and my chances.
Yeah, I'm not going to reiterate what Debbie Reddick said. We have instituted these changes. I think more important than that, and I say this honestly, is if you're going to Newleaf and you live 15 minutes away, don't get in your car. Walk. We're doing a lot with our bike pad pads. Buy a bike or soon hopefully we'll have rental bikes for people to use in town, electric bikes and regular bikes. Get on a bike. Don't get in your car because all you're going to do is make it worse. So I don't have an answer for the traffic problem. As Robert said, thank God we live in a place where people want to come. But I think we can do little things like we're trying to do right now, we're waiting on Caltrans to approve.
Well, I have to confess, I totally forgot about the traffic when I got ready to go to Newleaf. One of the things that saved me, because, you know, you had that moment of truth, which way do I go? Do I go on 1 or do I go through town? And I was kind of in town, so I thought, well, I'll go down Main Street. So then I cut back, I go around. The thing that saved me in the end was all the people that got frustrated and pulled off and turned around and I got moved up and I made it. Yes, yes, but for now, no. I'm just going to, I'm going to hide out at a certain time. Thank you. Like when Ryan said, hey, this is not about you. Okay. You like her, don't you? Okay, now, question, here we go. And we'll start with you, my dear, since you've got the microphone. "Where do you stand on poplar street and poplar beach improvements? How to balance needs of nearby residents versus improvements for visitors?"
I think the plan that we have right now is a combination plan and I think it's going to work for both residents and visitors. I think we need our sidewalks on Poplar Street so that our folks from the senior center can walk down to the beach. I feel the same way about Kelly. Kelly is a mess right now. And, you know, when I try to walk on Kelly to get to the beach and that's what I try to do, it's horrible. You know, I've never been hit by a car, but I could be hit by a car on that street. So getting sidewalks in, reducing the, increasing the parking spaces and improving the roads and improving the drainage, all of that is part of, it's in the plan right now and I'm excited about it.
Yeah, I think it's important to remember that Poplar Beach, I mean, it's, in a sense, it's people in that neighborhood. It's their front yard, right? And it's their front yard. So that's how I see, you know, living in Marimar, beach is our front yard. And we need to do, you know, we want things nice for tourists, but they also, you know, I loved that statement that came out recently from a young man, surfer who died. And he said, "Show up and be kind." Well, that's what we, now let's just see that over. Show up, but be kind to our neighborhood. You know, keep it clean. We'll be kind to you, be kind to us. And maybe once in a while we need a couple of enforcement people around reminding people to keep things clean. Because you know what, it has gotten busier over the years, hasn't it? We had to have more people coming down. So, you know, in recognition of that, maybe we need to help people in a nice way, saying, hey, politely asking you to respect this neighborhood, respect the people who live down this block, help keep it clean. We want to make sure the bathrooms are clean, we might hire extra people to keep things from overflowing, garbage cans, et cetera, and we can accommodate all the extra traffic.
So I think we have to be really careful what we do down there because of this, you know, front yard issue. And I think mostly what we need to focus on are sort of tweaks that make the visitor residence surfing experience better. So we have begun design for improving the access ways down to the beach from the parking area. I don't know when we'll actually go under construction, but we have begun designs and we'll fix that problem. We're also preparing to repair the walkway along Poplar Street from Railroad Avenue down to the beach. I'm kind of against any more parking. I'd like to see, I think we've made great strides in recycling bins and trash pickup and that sort of thing. We are going to have to address erosion. So we have a plan to manage access, which means pulling the benches back away from the cliff edge. Within four or five years, actually moving the trail back and controlling the horse experience because the horses are causing a lot of erosion. So that contract is up in the air and we're going to be dealing with the horses and making that less of a problematic experience for people going to the beach.
Yeah, the only problem I found with what you're saying is the parking lot. If you don't make the parking lot bigger, then people are going to park in the neighborhoods. And I thought, you know, can't stop them. I mean, I did, I think that we did something, tried to stop them and then Coastal, something happened and I had to take the signs down. You can't force people, you know, you can't close neighborhoods down, I guess, by the be, something. Anyway, yeah, make the parking lot bigger. That's, it used to be the dump. I mean, you put some more correct pavement on top, you got a bigger parking lot, let the cars park down there instead of in the neighborhoods. Yeah, I'd say put in flush bathrooms, flush toilets for everybody, for the people and, yeah, just make sure the garage chains are clean, you fixed the trail already down and the trail along that hiking trail is really in nasty shape already. And, yeah, all that stuff and you start.
I've had a lot of people along Poplar that have kids say speed bumps are required. There's tremendous speeding down Poplar, going to and from the beach and in the weekend evenings, it's pretty scary. The path, for six years, I've been trying to talk to them about just repaving it. It's like walking on the moon. It's a flurry of patchwork. And all I got was a sign that said caution uneven pavement on both sides. So that's not a solution. Police are there almost regularly now on Friday and Saturday nights. There's just been a lot of problems with drinking and all sorts of issues. I agree with more parking because there's an area down there and that can also pay for the cleanup and the trash receptacles that we have because people do park all over the neighborhoods and they leave a mess behind. And I do believe that, you know, that was, you know, a former dumping ground, so to put additional parking would be advantageous for tourists because it's closer proximity to haul all their stuff and as well, a nice clean pathway. I see so many people falling. It's a very slippery pathway. I don't know if the forces created it or just over time the erosion makes it worse.
Okay, well, I'm down to my last three questions and I always am not particularly happy about targeting individuals. So what I'm going to do to make it fair, because when you ask questions of a few people, you take away time from the other candidates. And so here's what we're going to do, here's how we're going to solve that problem, all right? I have a question for Virginia, I have a question for Robert and I have a question for Ms. Debra Penrose. So we're going to start with you, Virginia. And John and Debbie, you have a minute to talk about anything on your mind that you feel is pertinent to the issues that we've already talked about. That way it will be fair, everybody has a minute. And we'll start with you, Virginia, since you have the microphone. And the question for you is the following. Virginia, you always say you're against large scale RV parks. Does this mean that you're for a smaller RV park and how about it?
No. I'm not for hotel construction or RV parks on the coast side. I think we need, we have an infrastructure problem with traffic. And until you can solve certain problems, you need to slow certain types of growth down. And that type of traffic is weekend traffic, it's weekend heavy. And what I'm worried about with more hotels, quite honestly, is the diminishment of the value of the existing hotels that we have. Each time you create a shiny new toy, it takes away from the existing properties. The risk will be always on its own, but that's in a different expense category as well. We have 800 plus, 900 plus hotel rooms on the coast. I think that's sufficient. The RV parks, we have enough RV parks. They're not full. On certain occasions, they're full, but by and large, they're not. So I don't think we need additional ones. I hope that clarifies whoever asked the question.
John?
This is kind of a little bit of the same kind of stuff. The traffic, our big traffic problem. Okay, it's, I brought this up the last forum, that every time we build an ADU in Haplem Bay, there's two more cars. Every modern income housing place we put up, there's two more cars. And until our infrastructure gets better to the point where us 12,000 or 14,000 people wherever they live here can get in and out of town and all that kind of stuff to our liking, I guess, we'll have to put up with it because we're just going to keep adding more cars. Every time we build another house, it's more cars. Every time anything goes up, it's more cars. Even if the tourists weren't here, we're just, I've been here, let's say, 54 years. This road is the same as it was 50 years ago and I learned how to drive. There's been a little bit of improvements here and there, but overall, it's still the same, goes down the two lanes up there, goes down the two lanes out there, every direction. We just made the top of the model a little bit fatter, but then the neck's still small. And that's not going to change. And until we change that, I, we keep talking about wanting to put up more housing, ADUs and all the others, where are we going to put them?
Just one thing quickly. So the city was required to adopt a second dwelling unit ordinance by the legislature. So we were complying with state law and we, you know, did no more than we had to and tried to build in a few tweaks to make it, you know, more tolerable in existing neighborhoods. But I personally find that development in existing neighborhoods is preferable to building on our open spaces and building more McMansions and that sort of thing. So I just want to, at the last candidate's forum, Dr. Penrose and myself were criticized for not doing anything. So, "Under our watch, our new library was delivered on time and within budget. Design work has begun for improved beach access at Poplar Beach and Poplar Street pedestrian bike access from Main Street to the beach. Highway 1 and Kelly Avenue intersection improvements are scheduled for 2019 to 2021." Highway One and Kelly Avenue intersection improvements are scheduled for 2019 to 2021. Modified Highway One project to improve egress safety for the Ground View neighborhood residents. More than $10 million in grants received for Main Street Bridge and Highway One roadway improvements, and more grant funding on the way to address traffic congestion. Completed Main Street paving project and crosswalk enhancements. Contract and plans approved with the historic Jail and Barn Museum. Established sidewalk and street tree program with 300 hotspots scheduled. Completed significant energy efficiency upgrades at city facilities. Completed upgrades at the Ted Adcock Center and designed underway for improved kitchen. Adopted a second unit ordinance consistent with state law. For exploring concepts with affordable housing providers and landowners to potentially provide much-needed workforce housing. We reestablished a Parks and Recreation Department and Parks and Recreation Commission. We initiated and completed citywide Parks Master Plan and Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan.
That must be a Texas minute.
Oh, you did? I'm sorry. I missed reading. Ten minutes? Yeah.
Where's the bell? Okay, Robert, are you ready? Okay, this is for you. And you might want to briefly explain for the benefit of people that don't have a clue what this question means, why the question is. Okay, for you, Robert. Where did you come up with the musical school bus?
Yes, well, you know, that was, that was in relation to an issue around traffic. And, you know, we used to have school buses. And I've heard so many different opinions about school buses. You know, some parents want school buses back, some parents don't want school buses back. Students have different schedules, you know, kids are there after school activities, can't always use our Samtrans buses based on those schedules. So I said, you know, maybe we can have some pilots. Now, this is obviously going to have to do something in partnership with the school board, you know, not just by ourselves. I said, you know, we got to get creative. How do you incentivize kids going on school buses? So maybe we have schools involved. What kind of things would you like to be on, see on a school bus? Have, have some people who talk about their careers. I mean, you know, it's a nice, have people put music, nice to have the kids vote on kind of music they like on a school bus. Maybe let them paint some school buses. I was throwing out creative ideas, because I think you have to incentivize the students. And again, I started as a small pilot, and people would say, "Wow, that's cool. Oh, cool kids are going on the school bus, what's going on, right?" That's the kind of energy you build among the kids.
And we can get Rosca Ferry and School Bus Stripper.
Ready Fridays.
One thing we know about all the candidates running for city council is they're not introverted, are they? Okay, Ms. Deborah Penrose, this last question is for you. You said, whoever wrote this, you're making it difficult on your moderator here, but I do the best I can. Apparently, when you were talking about the various candidates' measures on the ballot, you talked about the Latino community and how they felt about it, and you responded to that. And the person says, yet you back measure GG, I believe. How do you justify that?
Yeah, I, when I spoke, what I was saying was my own personal opinion. When I vote, I'm going to vote for GG and AA. But, but my point was, I didn't decide to put an ordinance out there for the full chain. I decided to put it on the ballot rather than have us decide. We could have written an ordinance saying, "We've got nursery, we can have nursery starters in Half Moon Bay." We could have done that as a council. And because of the reaction from not just the Latino community, but that was the deciding factor for me, we decided the fair thing to do was to put it before the public and let the general public decide. So I, you know, it's, I'm not, I'm not advocating that anybody vote in any way. Just vote on November the 6th, no matter what you do, vote. And I don't care whether you vote yes or no on GG or AA. Vote. It's your choice. It's a democracy.
Here, here. Okay, so we've come to the end. We have just one more thing to do, and that is two minutes for final statements. And Ms. Penrose, since you have it down there, why don't we just start with you, a two-minute closing from each of you at this time?
Yeah, I'm going to sort of continue with a list of accomplishments that our council has made. We have reestablished our Parks and Recs Department and our Parks and Recs Commission. We have initiated and completed a citywide Parks Master Plan and Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan. Our Highway One project changed to include an eastside trail from Main Street to Spindrift, which is going to be funded by grants. And we've got plans, the county has plans to come down to Frenchman's Creek. We've got plans to go from Spindrift to Frenchman's Creek, although that's going to require a lot more money, because it's going to go over a creek. So we have to wait till we get the first park done. We completed a beautiful conceptual design for Carter Park, and we decided to make Carter Park our first park to really work on. Although we're going to do something in each of our existing parks, we're concentrating on Carter Park. We're putting in amphitheater seating. We've already done the electrical upgrade there and the lighting upgrade there, and we're going to have bathrooms and a stage. We adopted an anti-smoking ordinance. We increased our daytime and nighttime coverage at the Sheriff's Department. We have a new waste franchise agreement where food strap, scrap containers are now composted. We've got hazardous waste drop-off and shred events, increased trash collection and recycling at Poplar Beach. So we've been doing a lot of good things, and I want to get elected so that I can keep doing the good things that we've already started. I think we've had a fabulous four years. We've got a wonderful city staff. Now we've got a new city manager who's environmentally friendly, God bless him, and we're going to do great things. It's a great town.
Well, that's a really very impressive list between the two of you. I was counting, counted at least 30 items, things that have gotten done. This is a council, in my opinion, that gets stuff done. And that's one of the reasons I decided to run. This is a council that works well together and gets things done, and I want to be part of that. There's five of us up here. We bring different perspectives, a range of perspectives. And what I hear is, I think it's a group that deeply cares about this community. And in any organization, whether it's a business, the government, even families, getting things done has to do with the character of the people who are part of that team and family. I think cooperation, mutual respect, camaraderie of the team is what enables them to get work done. And it's really a mindset. It's a mindset. It's an approach to how you listen to each other with an open mind, which determines how you get things done. I think Mayor Penrose has actually done a gallant job and led listening sessions with the entire community on a number of different issues. We're having our second meeting on housing this week. And I went online, I looked, you know, what were the results? You know, staff was there gathering all of the opinions and all the surveys, and that's how city council determined that these are the key issues, the housing, the traffic. That's what came up in the listening sessions, and I really admire that. It's very transparent, it's all available. So I think it's a council of inclusiveness. And as an organizational effectiveness expert, it's in my DNA to find solutions that provide win-win for everybody. So I'm honored to have this opportunity to continue to help our city prosper even more as a community by the people, for the people. And like I said earlier, I'm so glad to see all these people are here tonight. I invite everyone to continue to show up, be kind, and same time, invite others to show up with us and be kind. That's what makes the community work, and that's why we're proud to live in Half Moon Bay.
That's a hard act to follow, but I'm going to continue on our list. So indulgent a little bit. So the local coastal program update is moving forward, and we're going to be having public meetings on the draft in fall, 28th in October, later this month, and in December, and then on in 2019. We've completed a sea level rise vulnerability assessment. So what does sea level rise under various scenarios going to do to our shoreline? There are properties at risk. We need to know that ahead of time so that we can plan accordingly. So we've adopted the online open government platform for improved access to the city financial information and increased transparency and accountability. We've created an online portal for Public Records Act requests, which certain people in this room, I think, are using and really like. We have the Local Government Hispanic Network Award for civic engagement. And never talked about the things we're doing with live translation. But the bottom line is, we're doing a lot of good things, and I would like to continue on to build on the progress we've made. There's a lot in the works. I'd like to help with my colleagues here to get the job done. And I'd be the only one, really, with extensive institutional memory to make sure we don't commit the mistakes of the past, and also understand enough about the job so I can help us chart a path in the future. So thank you very much.
Then we could all sit around and sing Kumbaya. The team here, or you've heard of commercials, the team, they're the team. Obviously, Virginia and I aren't. They're the team. Uh, yeah, the team, what other things have they done? Well, one thing, I'd like to start with, probably 99% of that stuff your staff does, you just vote on. I mean, it doesn't matter who's there, you vote on it. Staff does the work. That's why you have 32 people working in City Hall. They're the ones that do the actual work, and you just vote once every two weeks when you go to a meeting. Uh, the other things you've done, you're now suing Granada Sanitary, Granada Community Sanitary District, Montero Water Sanitary District, and the Sewer Authority Midcoast Side. Uh, you guys all know that Half Moon Bay is part of the Sewer Authority Midcoast Side. In essence, they're suing themselves to try to get out of paying their fare to JPA. They hired a, recently hired the new city manager, another outsider. Everything just keeps going on the same way, the same lawsuits that we've had before. When will we ever learn? You know, we had Beechwood, how much it cost us the whole city right there. So the same thing could happen again with all these lawsuits they wanted to do. If you want to have that continue, I guess you elect the team, and it'll be the same. Everything will stay the same. Nothing will actually get done, nothing you see will get done. It's always going to be next year. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everyone, thank you for hosting KM, KH, VH, KHMD Radio. And I'd also like to thank you all for the time and commitment that you put into this on an ongoing basis, year in and year out. It's a lot of work. You see it when you run for office. I've gone to various neighborhoods, and I've tried to meet as many people face-to-face as I can. You can't get to everyone, but fortunately, I've had a great experience in meeting a lot of people. Positive things get done, but there is a lot of frustration amongst the community in Half Moon Bay, that a lot of things that they would like to see done are not getting done, or they're not getting done fast enough. And, and I got yelled at the other day, that, "Oh, you're from city council, you know, nothing ever gets done, I don't want to see you." And I, fortunately, I was able to say, "It's not me, I'm not on city council yet." But there is frustration, and I think we all always have frustration. I'd like to be part of the solution, focus on certain things and actionable items that people can see progress. And all too often, I think there may be a lot of planning, and if it takes 10-plus years to, for people to see the results, it's too long. So I'd like to see certain projects get done. I'd like to commit that I want all the parks cleaned up and fixed within two years so that they look like parks. I think we need to revitalize downtown. There's a lot of things we can do, but vacant storefronts don't help anyone. We need to talk with the landlords, we need to come up with a cohesive plan, have cafes for the, just to create more community, have residences above the businesses, and make it a beautiful Main, beautiful and thriving Main Street. We need to solve traffic, and we need to do a lot for affordable housing. It's all things that we can do. We can't do everything, but together, we can certainly try to make progress. Thank you.
Okay, well, our thanks to all of the candidates that came out. We thank you for your time. And we thank you for showing up and participating. Give me a second, a little applause. A reminder and a request before we depart here. One is that this will be available on demand in a day or so, depending on how fast our operations manager can put it up on our website, so that you can listen to it if you have friends or neighbors that want to hear it and they weren't here. It will be available on KH, KHMB. Now you got me saying it, okay. And also, congratulations, send a big thank you to our cameraman from the back, who also recorded this for the local channels, the Pacific TV.
Pacific Coast Television Online.
Yes, yes, indeed. So you can, you can listen to it, you can see it. It will be available to you in both those medias. Also, a request that if you want to take any coffee with you, feel free. We have to empty those and clean those out before we return it to New Leaf, so if there's any munchies left, clean them out. Drink all the coffee up. But anyway, thanks again to all of our candidates, and thanks to you for coming out tonight.